Our speakers are here.
Yes.
Except I'm missing.
It'll give you time to-
Is there Nicole Willingbring in the room? Nicole? No, Nicole Willingbring? Only one of our speakers I haven't seen yet. She may still be coming in, so we'll- we can go ahead and get started on the watch for her. And if she shows up, great. If not, we'll have a couple of two minutes at the end, which will probably be the transitions.
Exactly. Okay.
All right, good evening. Thank you for being here and welcome. For tonight's listening session, we clearly have a lot of folks here tonight. We have a full agenda of speakers. We have 18 speakers, and each speaker will be given two and a half minutes to speak. And we've also invited them to join others speaking on the same topic. If you'd like to combine your time, and one person can take that allotted time, please feel free to do so. You have that freedom and that latitude. Barb and Carissa will be helping to organize the speakers and to help keep us on schedule. So, thank you very much, Barb and Carissa. Barb will also be helping us with the timekeeping and holding up cards, letting me know how much time you have left in your time allotment. You may use your time however you wish to simply share thoughts with us, to ask us questions, but we are asking, please, to limit your questions to two and a half minutes so that we can accommodate all of the speakers. We know the time is short this evening and realize that it might feel a bit rushed. For the public's information, we will be holding public hearings at the end of January in order to gather feedback on the school closure recommendation. This hearing will provide more time for all community members who are interested to share their feedback with the board. And it's important to note that during these hearings, time will not be limited, so you won't be bound by a time constraint, and we'll be able to hear from everyone who wishes to speak. And at that time, the entire board will be present. Please remember that comments and questions are welcome tonight, but that law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in public meetings. Please forward comments regarding individuals to Superintendent Pontrelli. And if additional conversation or follow-up is necessary this evening, the superintendent will direct a staff member to contact you and discuss further. Thank you again for being here.
Your first speaker is Allison Sherman, and she has combined with Fred Anderson, so she'll have extra time tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I want to keep this informal. I had submitted a question that I wanted to kind of maybe get some initial thoughts from everyone on, but just given in light of everything that's going on, I just thought I'd make a quick statement. Just for those of you who don't know, I have a son, Nathan Sherman, who is in sixth grade at Lake Elmo, and I alternatively enroll my youngest son, Cooper, at St. Croix Prep. As a parent, I became very vested, obviously, in my child's education, my children's education, and I've been following the goings-on of the school district ever since my son was in kindergarten. It's amazing to say, but my son, in sixth grade, we've had five superintendents. You're the fifth. So continuity and consistency in leadership, it has not been something I would use to describe us. So as I kind of have been following all this, I've seen very quickly on in my starting within the district that the district was having significant budget issues, long-term, ongoing, way prior to even my son coming into the district. I've systematically seen year-over-year cuts being made to very important parts of my child's education, and those cuts are what caused me to alternatively enroll my son into St. Croix Prep. I couldn't trust that services, that resources weren't going to get further cut and kind of diminish my child's experience at Lake Elmo. I think I've actually been proven right on that point. It has- we've seen great, great changes in the building. Incredible teachers, incredible leadership in the building, incredible children and incredible families, but the class sizes have gotten larger and resources have gotten- have been cut. I am looking for a solution that is going to- I know nothing is permanent, but is going to, as permanent as can be, fix the budget issues that have been going on for years. I am open-minded and willing to consider any and all proposals on the table. I haven't heard your proposal yet, and I'm looking forward to hearing it tonight, but I just cannot imagine continuing to cut the way we have been. Teachers, class sizes, I just don't know what there is left to cut. I am open-minded to a systematic restructuring of the district, and I'm willing to do whatever it is that I need to do to be a part of the solution. I'm- I guess I just want to say in general that my fear is that if this doesn't- if the board does not approve this proposal, and this gets back to my question, what can families in schools expect in terms of cuts for the spring? I mean, if this does not happen, we still have money that needs to be cut from the budget. That's my biggest concern if this doesn't go through. So is there anything that you can share? Maybe it'll be in your presentation tonight, but what is left to cut? That's my question.
Sure, we will share more information with you this evening, but basically, there are two buckets. If we aren't looking at our bricks and mortar, our schools and facilities, then we're looking at staffing and programming programs, just like we have in the past 10 to 15 years. We cut programs and we cut staff. We really only have three buckets to cut from. So tonight, when we share information in the proposal, you'll see more details from that, but unfortunately-
That's what's going to be-
That's where it is.
That was my fear. And so, again, I'm looking forward to the presentation. And I guess I want to just say, I guess, in closing, I'm probably the only person that's not on Facebook. I really don't. I might see via what my friends see and what people share with me, and I guess because I'm the first speaker, I just want to remind people that our kids are watching how we behave and what we say and the words we choose, and I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't just acknowledge that everyone is entitled to a different opinion based on their own experiences, and nothing- there should be no judgment. It's just what you experienced, and everyone has good intentions. I don't believe anyone here wants to close schools. I don't think you came into this job. You certainly were not- you didn't create this problem. You've just been handed the torch to solve it. And so, I appreciate your courage to try to do something to remedy the situation on a permanent basis, but I just want to remind people, our children, our parents, our families, our staff, they're entitled to their opinion, and I just- I want everyone to remain respectful. Our kids are watching.
Michelle Diesel is next. Okay. My statement is going to be to the board members. My name is Michelle Diesel. I'm a parent of a daughter and son who attend Oakwood Junior High. They did go to Lake Elmo Elementary, and that was, I have to say, I was very happy with the education that they received there. Also, I want you to know that my family, we've been in the district for, it's about six to seven years, and we moved specifically to Lake Elmo because of the Stillwater District, because we knew that they would have good education. Now, I would like to commend Superintendent Pontrelli and her team for their genuine concern for the education of all students. From my perspective, I believe that all students will benefit from the bold, forward-thinking proposal. What was very striking to me about the bold proposal was its commitment to sustainability and investment in all students. I noticed that the bold proposal was thoroughly researched and is data-driven. I see that Superintendent Pontrelli and her team are respectful of all taxpayers' dollars, regardless if they have money to send their children to private schools or not. As a taxpayer, my children are entitled to an equitable education despite my economic standing in life. In closing, I believe that my children will receive an equitable education if the bold proposal is moved forward. My hope is that you, the school board, will adhere to the mission of the Stillwater Area Schools and make equity paramount to your decision-making. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and district administration. Thanks for the time again tonight, and thanks again for the time on Monday with the administration, that the group that I've been a part of as far as opposing the bold initiative so far. And I have a number of statements, but also some questions that we want- that I wanted to bring to the table. First of all, I just wanted to highlight that over the holiday break, when this news first came out, that literally hundreds of parents take this situation so seriously that we took time away from our families and friends from the holidays to get together and work on this problem and put together a community initiative that received over 1,000 signatures of support within 48 hours. To date, that is now at 1,600 and continues to grow. The number of hours that we have spent looking into this, making sure that we have a legitimate argument and understanding the facts, making sure that we're just not sounding like complaining parents and that we are- perspectives are justified, has been uncountable. Thousands and thousands of hours, and the deeper we look into this issue, the more we feel we are more justified to keep looking and keep digging and keep pushing. You know, it's been said that there's been a lack of community involvement in this process, and I want to expand on that a little bit. Just Monday night, after a meeting with our group, it was mentioned that in that meeting at the Hugo Council, that community involvement was engaged. Allowing us to vent is not community involvement. Community involvement is helping make sure that we're on the same page as far as what the impacts of the district are. Our job as a community also is to provide input and approve the proposals that are put forth by both the administration and the school board. Both the administration and the board are accountable to us as the community. So my question is, are the risks that this proposal puts in place and the damage that it could potentially create to the fabric of this community worth the supposed benefits? And with this district's history of promises that become undelivered over and over again, how do we know this won't be the same situation?
Good evening. My statement's also for the board. So, my name's Jim Feller. I have a fourth grader and a sixth grader at Withrow Elementary with my wife. We believe that this so-called bold proposal is an unnecessary, flawed, and reckless experiment with the educational futures of our children. As such, we and many other parents and community members have reached out to you via email, phone calls, and in-person meetings to voice our concerns and make you aware of some very serious questions that are raised by this proposal. Contrary to how Ms. Pontrelli and others have characterized our reaction, this is not about emotion. Our questions are real, they're valid, they're fact-based, and to date, they remain unanswered. As Tom Lehman pointed out to me, one of your key goals as board members is to ensure decisions are made in the interest of all students and for future generations. To meet this goal, you must be fully informed. You need to understand every aspect and every detail of this proposal, and that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here to urge you to please fulfill the duties for which you were elected. Take as much time as you need, do whatever you need to do to make an informed decision, because I am confident that once you get past the rhetoric about capacity, equity, financial stability, and investigate the details, you will reach the same conclusions that we have. The thesis breaks down, the numbers don't add up, the proposal makes no sense, and you'll have no choice but to vote no. The district leadership, not me, not the parents, not the community members, the district leadership has a burden of proof here. They have to prove to you with overwhelming evidence that their proposal is the only viable path, and they will actually achieve their desired outcomes. So this is not a time for you to simply accept what Ms. Pontrelli and her team tell you. You need to ask hard questions, you need to challenge their assumptions, you need to question their conclusions and their logic. Ms. Pontrelli states that we need to close three schools because we have a capacity issue, and yet, we're about to spend $25 million to build a new elementary school, which by her own numbers will be at 53 percent capacity. Then, unbelievably, Ms. Pontrelli, in the last meeting, suggested that she thinks we may need to consider adding additional resources to expand that school. I thought we had a capacity issue. Ms. Pontrelli states that we need to close three schools because the children who attend those schools face quote inequities unquote. I assume her concern is these supposedly underserved children must be experiencing negative outcomes, and yet, both Withrow and Marine are not only top-ranked schools in the district, they're top-ranked schools in the state. Oak Park maintains the district's very successful CIP and GATE programs. Where is the evidence for negative student outcomes? Finally, Ms. Pontrelli asserts that closing these three schools will set the district on the path to financial stability. Even if we assume, her annual savings numbers will be realized, which is a huge assumption, these savings represent a mere 1 percent of the total operating expenditures. How does saving 1 percent put us on a path to financial stability? Where is the cost-benefit analysis? Close three exceptional schools, experiment with the futures of our children, disrupt the lives of highly engaged parents in their communities, all to save 1 percent? As board members, do you think that is a good risk-return proposition? Do you think that's worth the cost? Now, given Ms. Pontrelli's concerns regarding financial stability in our district, I'm concerned because she hasn't looked for savings within her own team. Surely, she cannot claim that every position on her team is essential for the operation of this district. In point of fact, in 2014, our district spent 1.7 times more per student for administration costs than our neighboring district, South Washington. It is an egregious oversight, or worse, for Ms. Pontrelli to come to you with a proposal focused on financial stability that closes schools, that cuts student-facing staff, without proposing significant cuts to her own administration. Again, once you get past the rhetoric and you really understand the details, the thesis falls apart, the numbers don't add up, and her bold proposal makes no sense, and you will have no choice but to vote no. Thank you.
Hello. I don't have any questions. I just have a prepared statement, and I'm going to talk really loud, so excuse me if it feels like I'm yelling at you, but I want everyone else to hear me.
Thank you.
First thing I'm going to say is that we, as Withrow, Marine, and Oak Park parents, are not advocating on behalf of our children at the expense of others. We are asking for the opportunity to help come up with an alternative to bold, something created with our feedback, something that has been created with the board, that has been chosen to represent us. I really hope, as a Stillwater resident, as a parent, as a taxpayer, that voting yes to bold is not a foregone conclusion. Think about the 700 children who stand to lose an integral part of their childhood. I am not exaggerating when I say that. When we talk about these amazing school communities, the administration has promised us that the spirit of our schools will still remain in the new location, and I say that is not possible. I feel that you are amputating a leg to treat a broken toe. The extreme measure that you are taking will only cost much more down the line. My son is on the autism spectrum. He has attended three schools in three years. We have tried two other schools in the district, and they did not work for us. He was belittled by his teachers and his peers. If he had remained at those schools, I honestly feel like his spirit would have been broken. Now you are telling me that I need to send him back there. Make no mistake, Withrow is contributing to the future men my sons will become. We chose Withrow for a reason. My son needs less special ed involvement because the school as a whole creates a positive model for him to mirror. When we gain confidence in our early years, we gain the tools for positive choices, who we choose as friends as teenagers, who we choose as spouses, how we allow others to treat us. Attending Withrow has taught my children what it is like to solve problems with kindness always in mind. Once you have felt respect from your superiors and your peers, you know how to seek it out. That is not a small thing. There are many thousands of students that you represent, so I please ask you to ask every question. Ask yourself why now.
Hi, my name's Angie Hong. My son is actually only four, so he's not in school yet, and so, when I first learned about this proposal, I actually had to stop for a minute and decide, how do I feel about this? Do I care? And I decided I do, because we moved to Stillwater four years ago, and I care really deeply about the St. Croix Valley and the vitality of communities in the valley, and I feel really strongly that schools are an anchor that holds neighborhoods and communities together. And when schools disappear from a neighborhood or a community, it's- you have such long-ranging impacts to all these, you know, economic vitality of the area, the social fabric of the area. So then I started researching, because I've never been involved in school politics before, and the first question I wondered is, wow, is that right? Are the enrollment really going down at these three schools? And then, when I looked at the data, I saw that it wasn't. So that was my question, first of all, that when I looked at the data, it showed that only Rutherford has had major declines in enrollment. There's been slight declines at Lily Lake and Lake Elmo, but that Oak Park, Withrow, and Marine have actually had increasing enrollment, so.
That's true. It's not the capacity of the current three schools alone, it's the capacity of our district overall. And so, you know, when one of the other folks talked about, it's exasperated while when we move sixth grade to our middle school model, then you really are looking between 60 and 70 percent for many of our elementaries. So it's not the current numbers in Marine, Withrow.
Sure.
And then, part of that also for Oak Park, the GATE program and then our autism program fills that space, but those are students who come to that school from all over the district, not just Oak Park immediate area. So that is our third smallest school.
So, yeah. I guess my last concern then is hoping that the- when I hear the board and the superintendent saying that this is a discussion that causes people to become emotional, I think, as somebody who does community outreach for a living, think about why people become emotional. They become emotional because it's something they care deeply about and usually because they don't feel like they have any control over the situation. So I would urge you to engage community conversations, use focus groups, use surveys, to learn more about what people's values and priorities are, and use that to develop the plan, as opposed to developing a plan first and then telling people what it is, because that's probably going to be more successful in the long run and get more support.
Evening. My name's Marty Guinea, and I've got three students in the Stillwater School District. I've got two at the junior high and one at Stonebridge. And two of my kids attended Oak Park, so I'm very familiar with the district and these schools. And there's a couple of things that I feel like need to be said. First and foremost, the issues, we've been in the district for 15 years, and these issues, like somebody spoke to before, have really been present since the beginning. Denise and Bob, you may not be aware of it, but over those 15 years, we've seen major technology issues, major boundary change issues, we've seen lots and lots of teacher cuts, we've seen lots of every-year pink slipping of new teachers in order to reshuffle funding and what have you. It's been a really chaotic financial picture. And that- the financial picture, it turns into real implications. Our son has an IEP, and we have firsthand knowledge of what it feels like to sit down at a school and talk about resources available and be told, oh, that resource has to be served to another school on that day, so that person- like, we wanted to make sure that he got that service, but that person's not here. They have to be shared with another school because of this and another reason. Or to sit in an IEP meeting and have everybody look around the room and like, who's going to be able to take care of this? And just silence around the room as to who has capacity left to take care of it. So I understand that there's a lot of emotion, and I understand that there's fear and there's risk about making this decision, but the other side of that coin are the very real today implications of what's- of how the district has managed its resources for many, many years. It's really not an efficient model. Would I love to have a 125-student neighborhood school in my neighborhood? Sure, right? It would be wonderful. What an amazing environment for us to do. But that's not practical. You can't run a school, you can't run a system like that where every 125 students has their own- has their own school. It wouldn't work. And so, what we do is we create disparities, and those disparities are very real. I understand the idea about taking time, and I get that, but I think what I read in the report and what I heard in the session that we attended was that when you sit down, when the staff sat down and looked at this issue, these issues are very real, and the decision becomes, let's make a change now, let's incorporate that change with the sixth grade change, with the sixth grade boundary change, with all the different pieces, let's incorporate it in one change so that we can reset our grounding and move forward. We don't keep fighting this thing and keep struggling with this tide time again. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it.
Hi. My name is William Pelusi, and I have a prepared statement that I'd like to read. And just to make a point, we understand that part of the problem is a $1.2 million budget deficit issue. The levy passed in this school should have been sufficient to cover those costs. You know, why didn't we have a levy that was 98 million, 99 million? You know, now we have a problem where we're dealing with 1.25 million. That seems like it's more than that problem. Ending the lease on three buildings that currently support other programming, as well as selling the central services building, will save money. But the leadership team, the administration team, told us that the dollars saved are earmarked for the new school and won't be used to help with the cuts. Also, we talk about the cuts and the expense side of our budget. I run a business, I have my own company. What about the income side? Our capture rate is 70 percent. What are we doing to capture students? Say that this is- our schools are the school of choice. Why is our district losing, over the past 10 years, 7 percent of our students? Again, that's, you know, that's just not a question, but just a statement. Transparency is needed regarding costs saved, costs for moves, and costs for shutting down buildings. Dollars we voted for that included our Oak Park improvements for kids, for our kids, should not be used for district administration benefit. It's just pure wrong. We're being told that this will give us equitable programming, but we have no detail on what this includes. Leadership has not involved parent groups to help prioritize these programs or determine if closings would truly better support these programs. There's- there is and always has been one proposal. Engage the community, provide the data, and we'll help identify other solutions. On top of that, you know, as we look at these things, you know, Superintendent Pontrelli mentioned at one point, the Bridged Excellence Plan, which is the strategic plan, was way too optimistic, and we currently don't have the funds to support that initiative. How can future decisions be made when there's little faith in the plan by the CEO or superintendent of the school district, regardless if you are part of the district or not? So again, we have a lot of change happening. New school boundary creations, elementary school consolidation, new school openings, sixth grade- So Superintendent Pontrelli, we're asking you not to fail the administration, not to fail the board. Let this happen, let the decisions happen, involve the community, bring us into this discussion. That's what we're asking for. There can't be one proposal, there has to be alternatives. That's what we're asking.
You're next. You're next. You're next.
My name is Ziss Weisberg. My family lives in Grant, and my children attend in Stonebridge and Withrow Elementary Schools. They now attend UW-Madison, Stillwater Area High School, and Stillwater Junior High School. I would be here today no matter which elementary schools were affected by the proposal. In 2013, we were clearly informed that failure to pass the proposed levy would result in significant cuts to school programs, staffing, and even the closure of Ann Elementary School. In May 2015, we were asked to support a $97.5 million bond to fund major construction as well as sixth and ninth grade transitions. Both passed. In both instances, voters approved all the tax dollars that the district asked for. Now, despite this massive contribution of taxpayer revenue, we hear district administrators want to close three schools. This outcome is much worse than what we were told would happen if the levy failed. This isn't what we voted for. Today, the superintendent and some board members explained the language used in pro-levy educational material. They defined efficiencies, strategic planning initiatives, and reallocation of resources as equivalent to school closures. Unfortunately, they weren't willing to make this clarification before the vote. Using this kind of vague euphemistic language represents an unacceptable standard of communication. We deserve a higher standard. After the 2015 bond referendum passed, the leadership committee asked for a capacity study. The superintendent explained the findings, which showed unexpected underutilization of space in some of our elementary schools once we moved sixth graders to the middle school. Unfortunately, none of this was explained before the bond passed. I was told this study was considered too expensive to perform before knowing the outcome of the bond. It seems more than prudent to spend a few thousand dollars to make sure that $100 million is spent wisely. Unfortunately, the recommendation to move sixth graders to the middle school severely miscalculated its financial impact and capacity implications. Some on the board have told me the reality of the budget shortfall takes precedence over any perception that promises were broken. This is not a perception. We wouldn't be here today if district leaders did what they promised to do. Trust is the foundation of any good relationship, and without it, progress isn't possible. Who doesn't think we'll need more space in five, 10, 15 years? The question isn't if the board will ask for more tax dollars, but when? And misleading the public makes future progress very difficult. We approved all the money the district asked for. Now we're told it's still not enough to save our schools. I would have approved a higher bond amount if it guaranteed all our schools stay open. I thought I did that.
Thank you.
I first want to take a second to thank you for taking the time to listen to our questions and our concerns tonight. I understand that you are trying to think through a really big decision and do what's best for our current and future district-wide students. And I do trust that all of us have the same mission, that we will have healthy, thriving schools and students. I don't know if this is the best, if the bold proposal is the best proposal, but I do know that eight weeks is an awfully short time to decide. What can we do? I'm here tonight to bring attention to what can we do as a community to talk about it and really engage in what our options might be. How can alternative solutions be identified? Currently, we have no alternative solutions. In statements to the media and letters to families, it's been said that our school cultures can be recreated in our new school. I don't believe that's true. I would like everyone to consider that you can't recreate, at least, I know other school cultures, but I'm speaking specifically to the school my children go to, to Oak Park. In our school, we have independents walking to and from school. We have students who would not otherwise be able to walk to school independently. They walk to school with friends currently. It's a close, it's a close distance. They know people on the way to their state. We have close support for students in our school that have family units that are working hard to give them shelter and food, and they look to our school to take care of their child in ways that they can't themselves. These parents are able to live in close proximity to our school. Their children are able to walk and they are able to interact with our school community because they don't need their own transportation to get to school. As an Oak Park parent and a South Hill resident, I'm concerned that closing a school in our historic part of town will negatively impact not only our capture rates, but the rate of resale in our area and in our town to new young families. Oak Park is part of a thriving, walkable community that structures all our students as a neighborhood. We see each other frequently, we know each other in our front porch community that our neighborhoods, like Liberty on the Lake, are modeled after. We make connections on our walk to school. You can't connect the same way in the school carpool line or waiting at the bus stop alone for your kid. Overall, I want to stress that we, as taxpayers of the community and parents, haven't been invited into this conversation, and we would love to be a part of collaboration, to come up with a strategy that solves our certain crises, but is also one that we're able to live with into the future. Our kids deserve our time.
Board members and district administration, thank you so much for your time and all the sleepless nights, I'm sure that you've all had as well. I'm here to represent really the entire district. So I have a couple of parents with me here from Stonebridge because there really is an opportunity to talk about what this means for the entire district. The bold proposal does impact everyone, not just because of the physical changes proposed, but really the direction of where the district is going as a whole. This is really a turning point in how we define our culture and identity. We currently have schools in place that are assets to the district and really provide a draw for new families moving into the community. There's support for the bond that was passed to help strengthen our district as well with all the transition we've been speaking to tonight. Administration has raised three main concerns: capacity, finances, and programming. Parents from all schools need to have the visibility to how this impacts their child. The bold proposal displaces approximately 20% of elementary students. To really provide a comprehensive view of this proposal, there needs to be visibility to school boundaries, class sizes, sections per grade, and if parents will retain the ability to open and alternate enroll. For example, in the learning session, Stonebridge capacity numbers showed 575. With the new enrollment projections, that number comes to 574. I noticed in the news slide deck tonight, there is a buffer room of nearly 100 kids added to the Stonebridge capacity numbers. This is really not at this point providing a ton of transparency to students and parents in those other schools. So really, what are these true numbers? What do these boundaries look like? Parents need to know. And also, if you're filling schools to capacity, what does this do to parental choice? There are concerns about administration's suggestion to redraw boundaries, explore existing inefficiencies, and plan for programming reinvestment after making the decision about the bold proposal. Do you really think that this act-first, research-later approach is the right approach? Administration stated the 1.2 projected savings wasn't enough to meet the financial deficit. The large-scale consequences will really not be the complete answer for the district. When administration was asked about the plans to reinvest the 1.2 million in programming, they stated they cannot begin to look at that until all buildings are running efficiently. They said we need to operate at a baseline level before looking at enhanced programming. Are we really okay with a school district that has an immediate goal of operating at baseline? Programming is an issue of betterment, socially, emotionally, psychologically, and intellectually. These things cannot be measured on a flow chart.
Thank you.
So I had a bunch of notes that I was going to bring with me, but I think it's just best if I speak from my heart, because the other day, we had a chance to meet the district leadership. And then, much like this gentleman here, I'm a business owner and have been for 20 years. And in the course of 20 years, I've made a lot of mistakes. And there's an element of humility that comes along with mistakes, and it really shows you what culture means to a business. Ms. Pontrelli, as CEO of the district, needs to really start to think about the systematic changes that she has to make, that we talked about the other day. I asked her, do you intend to run this like a business? She said yes. And when you think about that, you think about what are the core values then of the school district? Because I think what's happening here is you have schools that already have an identity, that already have a culture, and that's the reason our families attend, bring our kids to these schools, and that's why we live in this community. We can't forget that virtue has to be at the core of any centralized system. And how can you operationalize a system if you don't understand what your own core values are? And that's what I really challenge right now for the board, is to make an informed decision. You really have to know, what's the strategy? Because right now, we're talking a lot of operations, but no strategy. Thanks.
Ms. People earlier, so she's here with Kate Herring. Good evening. My name is Nicole Willenbrink, and I wanted to share my perspective on the bold plan from someone who does not yet have children in the Stillwater school system. After graduating college and getting married, my husband and I purchased our first home enroll cell. After three years, we decided we were ready to start a family and begin looking for a home and community to plant our roots. Ultimately, we were led back to our hometown of Stillwater. You see, we both grew up here, and I attended Stonebridge and my husband attended Marine. Growing up, we felt like the community was so supportive of the educational system here, and we really valued the quality education that we received, so we decided to move back to provide that same experience to our future children. So last April, we purchased a home on the South Hill and have absolutely loved being back in town, investing in the community where we grew up and working here too. My husband works downtown, is the head chef of a restaurant, and I work at Anderson Windows. We now have a baby on the way due in March and dreamed of raising her in what we plan to be our forever house, walk her up to Oak Park each day and really plant roots here for our family. But now this bold plan has us reevaluating our plans and exploring other options. While our first child won't be in school until 2021, we don't like what the future looks like here for our child's education if three elementary schools were to close. It indicates to us that, and I'm sure many others, that the community doesn't value education like it once did, and is no longer a flourishing community for young families. The school system was the main driver in our decision to move back and is also the driving force for many of my friends right now who are also planting roots in, as they grow their families. So the millennials, so from a millennial with no kids in the school system, I want to urge you to reevaluate the bold proposal. This plan will have negative repercussions on the city as people like my husband and I will seek out other communities to plant our roots and raise our families, which will not only mean declining school enrollment numbers, but also negatively impact home values and the Stillwater economy as a whole. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to pull my red sweater out of the back of the closet tonight, so. I want to talk a little bit about what I read on the last slide of your proposal that you're going to be reviewing tonight, Superintendent Pontrelli. My name is Jay Axarad. I have two children that attend Withrow Elementary. And I want to talk, I guess, a little bit about some of the objectives of the proposal that we're going to hear tonight. So this is mainly directed towards the board. I appreciate your time and attention on this matter. I know you guys have taken this very seriously and that, you know, a lot of sleepless nights probably on this. So, so let's walk through the bullets as they're written here. Return to excellence. So my first question there is, how do we define excellence? And I would hope that the district tonight begins to define what that means to us, because the proposal in front of us is closing two, three of the best performing elementary schools within the district. So how do we return to excellence when we're cutting some of that? More equitable support to all students. I think equity is a great term, but it's kind of like, I want clean air. There's no real way to define that, and everybody's going to be for that. And I think it's a great objective, but I think the district needs to clearly define what that means. And if they're going to define it, we need to have measurable results going forward that show how we're meeting those objectives. Financial stability. The district has said that they're going to save approximately $1.26 million as a result of closing these schools. However, I don't see any added costs for moving the roughly 600 students to the remaining elementary schools. I don't see any added costs in terms of utilities, added support staff. I don't see any costs in terms of, you know, busing those students further. So I think that there's another look there. We need to look deeper and be very, dig into, dig into the details in terms of the financial picture, because I don't believe that it's as rosy as being portrayed. Potential loss of students short-term. Why is this short-term? If you look at, if you look at Withrow Elementary and Marine alone, they have about 40% of the students that open enroll into the Stillwater School District. They also have a very high percentage of students that alternate enroll from other schools within the district. If we get rid of these three schools, why do we feel that our retention rate and our capture rate is going to go up? It will go down. Thank you.
Is Clayton here?
Yeah, right here.
Oh, sorry, Clayton. We'll let you go after Sarah. I apologize. Say that.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Leturno. I have two daughters in the district. My seventh grader is at Stillwater Junior High, and my third grader is at Rutherford. I am proud to stand before you tonight and speak in support of the bold proposal. I have been a resident of the district for six years. The last five years, I have been a regular at school board meetings, on committees, and as a volunteer in our schools. I've been through a failed levy, which propelled me to action. I successfully, then we had a successful levy and a successful bond. In addition, I worked very hard to get Paulo Lachlan on the school board. I am saying all of this as a way to show my commitment to this district, and this decision did not come easily or lightly. There are many reasons why we are in this situation. However, I'm here to speak and look to the future. This summer, our school board hired a new superintendent. We said we wanted a leader with a vision and a strategy. We said we wanted stability. We said we wanted progress. We want programs that challenge and inspire our students. We said no more cuts. We're tired. We want our students, district, and community to thrive. In order to thrive, changes need to happen. Unfortunately, to become the district we want to become, we must be bold and we must act. We can no longer kick the can down the road, spend down our reserves, and hope the legislature or federal government will provide more funding. I applaud our superintendent for her leadership and courage to make very unpopular recommendations. And it was because of this courage she showed that gave me the strength to come tonight. Some would say that it's easy for me to support a plan that doesn't affect my kids. The reality is, it does affect my kids. There is no guarantee that my youngest will continue to attend Rutherford after the rejiggering of boundaries. And if she does stay at Rutherford, the school will look very different. We will have an influx of teachers, staff, and students. I welcome those changes, and I welcome new energy, new ideas, and new challenges. Okay? And just in closing, I have one question for our superintendent. As we look to stabilize our district, it's imperative that we have stable leadership. I have heard that during the interview process, this was the only job you applied for and that you want to retire from Stillwater. Is that true?
That's accurate.
Thank you.
Clayton?
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you for taking the time. I'm Clayton Eampe. I am a proud father of a first grader at Withrow Elementary and a fourth grader at New Heights Charter School. I had a prepared statement, but I think about 16 people covered my stuff. So I'm just going to kind of... We're tired. We want our students, district and community to thrive. In order to thrive, changes need to happen. Unfortunately, to become the district we want to become, we must be bold and we must act. We can no longer kick the can down the road, spend down our reserves and hope the legislature or federal government will provide more funding. I applaud our superintendent for her leadership and courage to make very unpopular recommendations. And it was because of this courage she showed that gave me the strength to come tonight. Some would say that it's easy for me to support a plan that doesn't affect my kids. The reality is, it does affect my kids. There is no guarantee that my youngest will continue to attend Rutherford after the rejiggering of boundaries. And if she does stay at Rutherford, the school will look very different. We will have an influx of teachers, staff and students. I welcome those changes and I welcome new energy, new ideas and new challenges. Okay. And just in closing, I have one question for our superintendent. As we look to stabilize our district, it's imperative that we have stable leadership. I have heard that during the interview process, this was the only job you applied for and that you want to retire from Stillwater. Is that true?
That's accurate.
Thank you.
Clayton?
Sorry. Thank you for taking the time. I'm Clayton Heemke. I am a proud father of a first grader at Withrow Elementary and a fourth grader at New Heights Charter School. I had a prepared statement, but I think about 16 people covered myself. So I'm just going to kind of ask a few questions. You know, we, we talk about capture rate. On October 8th, you presented to the board our attendance figures declining. We were up one student, but overall declining in terms of the fact that we're losing more students than we're gaining. And you don't like to talk about our kids as being captured or anything like that, but at the end of the day, it's revenue. I have one foot in the district, one foot out in the district, if you want to talk about my kids as my feet. With this proposal, my family is leaving the district. Three years ago, I moved into this district specifically to attend Withrow. We attended a very high achieving school in another district. It wasn't the right fit for my family. Families need choice. We made the choice to sell our home, to uproot our family and move here based on the fact that a referendum passed. For a while, we rented just to make sure that we could get the, sorry, I shouldn't say referendum, based on a bond passing. We went to the meetings. It was documented that if it doesn't pass, there's the opportunity for closings. We clarified, so does that mean if it passes, there are no closings? Yes, that means there's no closings. This is very frustrating for all of us. I'm sorry, I'm being a little bit emotional here, but what frustrates me is when we move our children, we can't recreate these cultures. I, I think we're kidding ourselves to sell it to say that we'll just recreate a culture. And it causes more challenges and there's more costs. This $1.2 million savings, is it real? For one, you're going to lose a chunk of families. I don't want to entertain what that number is, but I have a feeling it'd be a decent amount. For two, you're going to have added costs. I think you've accounted for a couple of them, but I really fear for, you know, this $1.2 million in savings, you identified like one FTE and things like that that can be saved, but at the end of the day, what about the added administrative costs? I know you're saying there's less efficiencies because admin at other buildings and stuff like that aren't maybe fully at capacity, but there's other issues that crop up with children. And I have a feeling you'll see that the more expensive resources, the school psychologists and things like that, that are going to be needed, as much as they're going to be in that building more often, they're going to be still attending to more issues per day and more kids at a longer experience. So if my kid is, if my kid was at Rutherford, I might be in a situation where I have less access than even if my kid, even if the school cycle was only at Withrow for one day a week. I don't know what the numbers are, but I have less access overall and I don't feel like those things have played out and I really want to hear about that. We are all here. I think the format for listening sessions is great because you, you know, it improved your attendance, but we are all here to be part of the solution.
Thank you. Your time is up. That's all our speakers.
All right, thank you. That concludes our listening session. Our board business meeting will start at 6:30. Thank you.